Call our Suffolk City Council work session to order. Our first order of business is assigned ordinance text amendment update. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, during your December 2nd, 2020 regular session meeting, a staff report was presented outlining amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance regarding the ordinance's texts concerning signs or regulating signs. This was in response to a previous Supreme Court decision. Today's staff report will again address the changes within the UDO necessary to meet the court's decision, along with a few other recommended revisions. In addition, staff will provide a process in or recommend process and schedule for addressing this and also the opportunity to receive additional public input. The presentation will be given by Kevin Hughes, leading off, followed by Bob Gumis, the Acting Director of Planning on the Technical Issues. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, good afternoon. I, for one, can share with you, I have a complete new appreciation for signage than I ever did before. We've obviously come to you before, we've had some, some good interactions, some good discussion, and really dug in, taken some time to make sure that we can both explain it from a technical perspective, but also from a layperson perspective and from a citizen perspective. And so, we really want to kind of slow things down a little bit, again, walk you through why we're here and what we're proposing in a little different fashion. And I apologize for, for, for a couple of things, and one would be that you're going to hear a few things a few different times. And for me, it sometimes takes a few different times to, to understand it, soak it in, things of that nature. And so, we're not going to belabor any points, but you will hear some things a couple of times, just to point out the importance, as well as talk through some of the process and why we got to where we are from a proposal perspective. And so, without further ado, I'm just going to do a brief little introduction, and then let, let Bob really walk you through some of the technical aspects and give you a kind of a high level, and then talk about kind of where we go from here from a suggestion standpoint. All right, so I'm going to just recap quickly, best I can, and, and the manager touched on this, we're here because in 2015, the Supreme Court had, had a ruling that changed how we regulate signage. We currently do, for the most part, especially on temporary signs, a content-based signage regulation standpoint. In 2015, the Supreme Court changed all of that. So that's why we're here. So, obviously, we're in 2021, we need to take action because if, if we were pressed on some of these things, we'd be hard-pressed to really defend what's, what's taken place. And so, this is really triggering why, the main reason why we're in front of you, and some of those content aspects that we have to look at, really just change how we have to describe or regulate some of the signage. The content was, was deemed to be the way to regulate, regulate signage. There was additional consideration given to, to things like signage and location, and Bob will touch on that a little bit further. And so, just a quick example is that what we used to call a political sign, which I think everyone here is familiar with, we're now referring to a yard sign. And so, that's just an example of how we have to change some of the terminology. And some of it's just as simple as a terminology change, and some of it is a little more in-depth as it relates to, to how we do permitting or enforcement, things of that nature. But all in all, it's not a, a complete swipe or a redo. Secondarily, what we've proposed in here is a, a few modifications, I'll call them upgrades or, or updates to, to the signage ordinance, to really keep up with the industry, keep up with the development, things that we're hearing on a fairly regular basis that we think makes sense. We've looked at neighboring communities, we've looked at other communities, and followed some of those best practices, and, and Bob will touch on those. But some of the things you'll, you'll hear about are the electronic message board, some, some changes in a very small window in mixed-use developments, and then you'll hear about the percentage increase in, in window signs. And then finally, just from a timeframe perspective, the staff worked with the Planning Commission on the, the changes on the ordinance, they approved that in October, they had one very minor edit, and so, then it came to City Council. And before we got to the public hearing with City Council, a staff report was given in December. There's a lot of discussion related to that. Some were some really good questions that came from City Council to ask some more details about how we would regulate this, was it as thoughtful as it maybe needed to be? Some things were just really kind of an education or discussion on signage, some frustration, some things that we all experience. And I know, sometimes the way that I think of it from a simplistic view is, on signage, everybody's right. Big, small, everyone has a perspective, and, and if we can find a way to, to meet in the middle best that we can to respect everybody, that I think to a certain degree, that's kind of what we're shooting for. But we have started this public hearing process, as I mentioned, with the Planning Commission, we need to see that through. And so, again, we are here in front of you in a work session, we want to revisit some of these items that we tucked up, touched upon, talk about the, the ordinance in general, we've got some new faces, new members, I'm fairly new to this as well, at least in this aspect. And so, we think it makes sense to continue the conversation, bring you back up to speed after we've done some research from the last time in December. We think that there's an opportunity, following this meeting, to have some more public engagement and interaction, both from a, a virtual standpoint, but also from a face-to-face standpoint. And then we'd like to continue forward with the public hearing at the appropriate time, to, to put this in, in, in place so we can move forward and, and be in compliance with the Supreme Court decision. And with that, I'll let Bob walk you through the details.
Thank you, Kevin. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, good afternoon. It's my pleasure to provide to you a status report on, on where we are with our update with regards to sign regulations. As Kevin had mentioned, the genesis of this effort is really in, been in response to the decision made by the United States Supreme Court. Just a little bit of, of background so that everybody's on the same page. Similar to the city of Suffolk and many other communities across the country, the town of Gilbert, Arizona, had a sign ordinance that categorized many signs by their type and the topic of the communication they were attempting to convey to the public. And within each of these various categories, the signs were subject to different regulations and restrictions. So, for example, for similar temporary-type signs, such as political signs, they were allowed in Gilbert to be allowed for up to 60 days before an election, and to remain up for 15 days after elections. That's very similar to what our current code states. While, in contrast, what they call a qualifying event sign, such as the, the Good News Community Church that brought this suit, these signs were making an announcement, announcing the time and location of the services and where they would be held. And these type of signs, even though they were very identical as far as size and, and whatnot, they were only allowed to be up for a period of 12 hours before the event and one hour after the event. So, the simple question that the court asked itself is, does an ordinance that restricts the size and duration and other standards with regards to these type of similar signs violate the Free Speech Clause of the 14th Amendment? And the answer was, yes, it does. And that, on its face, the regulation is content-based. Again, if the regulation applies to a particular speech because of the topic or message that the signs conveying, then it was deemed to be content-based. Now, the court also did make some notes, however, that in making its ruling, found that certain regulations that are not tied to content are, continue to be permissible. So, such things, in essence, as similar signs need to be treated in a similar fashion, and that the regulations may govern the characteristics such as the size, the form of the sign, the location, illumination, whether it's on public or private property, commercial versus residential property, on and off premises, all of those may be governed by the local government. So, in response, staff has analyzed our current sign regulations and found that many, at least in part, are defined and categorized, again, based on their anticipated or specified content. Many, if you look at the Unified Development Ordinance with regards to how we define different types of signs, they clearly state what the intent of that message is. So, as such, the regulations have been updated to, in an attempt to assure that signs are regulated in a content-neutral manner. I do want to point out, however, that, to the extent possible, we continue to maintain the prescribed standards of the existing regulations with regards to those other aspects of the sign that are not content-based, meaning size, form, location, illumination. We were not attempting to rewrite the entire code, we wanted to maintain the integrity of what we have already had in place. So, within the UDO, the governance of signs are addressed in several different sections. Certainly, most of the regulations are located in our supplemental standards with regards to signs in 31714, which are, are sign regulations. But we also cover signs and various other aspects of the, of the code. And our intent was to remain true to the current standards, again, while bringing the rules into compliance with the Reed decision of the Supreme Court. So accordingly, the regulations governing locational criteria, setbacks, height, and other dimensional standards, remain largely the same in what we have brought forward through the Planning Commission for your consideration. I will point out, though, however, that in those cases, and as Kevin emphasized, where our experience, we've learned and it's been demonstrated that the current regulations are perhaps too restrictive or problematic, that staff has attempted to make some changes to those other standards that are, that are not content-based. These are very few, but they are some important aspects. I think the most notable might be the inclusion and changing the amount of time that electronic message boards may be allowed to change the message that they have. We've all seen these type of signs, they're the, the electronic sign where, you know, through a computer program, you can put up illustrations, you can do a lot of different things with these signs. And currently, our regulations only allow these type of signs to change their message once every hour, once every 60 minutes. Based on some feedback that we've received, we, we would suggest that, that perhaps be amended to allow the sign to change once every minute. Seems like a very significant change, which, which it is, and, but if you think of the context that many of these signs are located in, if you're driving by, a minute is, is a long time. I believe most stoplights might be for 30 seconds that you're, you're sitting at a traffic light. So, that might be something that's worth consideration and that we presented. With regards to these signs also, we've all seen that sign that we want to try to avoid. I'm not aware of an electronic message board that is so offensive here in Suffolk, but we've seen them in our, in our daily travels or, on occasion. And so, one of those challenges that's associated with those type of signs that, that become a, a problem and that are unsightly to a community, many of those aspects revolve around how bright the sign is, or at least people perceive it as to how bright the sign is. So, we've also included in, in the regulations that these type of signs have the capability and be required to automatically adjust their brightness based on the ambient light conditions that surround them. So, when the, so when the time is bright and sunny, the sign might need to be brighter so that it's visible, but it's not necessarily, it's not intrusive. Where on the converse, at night, when it's dark, the sign doesn't need to be as bright. And so, with this capability, and our current code does not have that, we can address some of those type of issues that may, may make these type of signs more problematic than they need to be. We would also...Andy, can you change the slide, please? The remote's not working. Thank you, sir. So, one of the other conditions with regards to these type of signs is that at the property line, again, they not be any brighter than .3-foot candles, that's a very technical term, but we have similar type of regulations with regards to parking lot lighting, how bright that parking lot lighting may be at the property line. Next slide, please. Thank you. We also wanted to accommodate and help out with the successful development of significant mixed-use development projects that are ongoing in the city and, are coming, coming through also. These would be significant projects that are located along limited or restricted access highways only, and we have proposed allowing the limit of number of these taller monument-style signs. Next slide, please. So, these signs that would be, in addition to the, the typical sign that a, a development might be, have along its local street frontage, would allow a sign up to 45 feet in height in an area of 450 square feet in area. They, to avoid the overabundance of these type of signs, though, we would limit how many would be permitted within a, a half-mile of each other. So, there, no two could be closer together than any half-mile. Next slide, please. Thank you. We've also proposed some changes to window signs, in particular, increasing the size from the current 10% of window area that a window sign may occupy to 25%, and with a maximum of actually 40%, dependent on the zoning classification of the property and the transparency of signs. You could see in this illustration that you can see through the letters, between the letters in the sign, whereas if, in contrast, if that was a completely opaque sign, it'd be a much different appearance and a much different consideration with regards to maintaining public safety, for example, and, and so forth. So, we're proposing some changes there also. Next slide. Thank you. Now, as Kevin previously pointed out, when City Council was previously briefed back, back at some time, there was a question between council members. Based on that, this Based on that, this conversation, several modifications have been prepared for consideration and, and, and response. The, the first is not regulate the number of yard signs. Now, as Kevin pointed out at the beginning, based on these categories of content versus not content, many signs had to be grouped together into a non-cat, non-content-based category. So, for example, again, he mentioned political signs are now considered yard signs. That's not the only type of yard sign. Again, we're not regulating based on content. So, initially, for example, the number of yard signs that would be permitted was suggested to be two. Council had conversation about that, brought to our attention, that, you know, if you were talking particularly about just using the example of political signs, there, you might have four or five candidates, you know, depending on the election cycle, you might want to, to voice your support for. So, we've proposed modifying the number of yard signs that would be allowed to an unlimited number. We would not be looking to, to regulate those. Now, yard signs, I want to be sure everyone understands, are considered a temporary sign. We're not talking about a permanent sign, and they do not require a permit. You don't have to come into the city with a proposal and an application and pay a fee in order for us to review. But nevertheless, we, we have proposed that yard signs be, the number be unlimited. However, again, maintaining public interest, public safety considerations, we would continue to suggest that, depending on the zoning district that the sign may be in, that the size and height of those type of signs be regulated. Again, not looking at content-based. Next slide, please. There was also some conversation during that work session regarding the definition of culturally significant properties. And this is associated, and again, some, as Kevin said, it's challenging sometime to give an example of what type of sign you're talking about without perhaps talking about content. In my mind's eye, this would be the type of sign that would be informational, if you have a historic property that, that you want to provide information to, to visitors about. So, using that as, as an example, the definition of culturally significant property was, was clarified, that it would be something that is determined to have a historic cultural or environmental significance by either the local government, the state of Virginia, or the United States. Again, the number of signs that would fall in this category, that would be allowed, would be limited to three, the size would be, be similarly regulated. Next slide, please. Now, as I pointed out, that our current regulations with regards to location, size, setbacks, those dimensional criteria, we did not attempt to change, for the most part. Similarly, signs that are prohibited currently would continue to be prohibited as being proposed. We did not attempt to make modifications here. So if it's, if it's prohibited now, it would continue to be prohibited. And, and these include billboards, vehicular signs, and off-premises signs. Next slide. Thank you. Also, roof signs, unless otherwise provided, and we do have a provision in the regulations for when a roof sign may be allowed, portable signs, and signs located in the right-of-way. Next slide, please. It would also include, again, existing circumstances, as well as in the future, signs that are animated, pennants, ribbons, streamers, banners and so forth, flashing lights, those type of things. And then also, any sign that would impede traffic visibility or the safe pedestrian and bicycle passage. Next slide, please. So, in, in dealing with signs, one of the things that came up and some of the challenges that, that we have to deal with, particularly with regards to enforcement, do revolve, for the most part, around many of these temporary signs that may be allowed or not allowed that do not require a permit. We very rarely have a problem with someone who needs to obtain a permit, submits a plan to obtain their permit, it's reviewed and approved. The challenges come in, you know, when, when staff's not here, on weekends, and those type of things, where people are putting up snipe signs, either in the, the roadway right-of-way, tacking them to telephone poles or, or whatever, those weekend warriors, that, those could present challenges. Other challenges, though, can, can be the signs that do not require a permit or, or approval. Again, that's not to say they should, but they can be challenging if, if, if you have locational criteria or size requirements and those type of things that you have to pay attention to. And sometimes those are simply, the enforcement is, is based on complaint-driven. And then one thing we do want to point out is to try to avoid including special exceptions within the, the regulations. Best to try to treat everyone the same, in the same manner throughout the regulations. Currently, we do have some special exceptions where the director or the zoning administrator may make a discretionary decision based on, on what is being proposed. And we would suggest that it be best to try to avoid those whenever possible, and because many times those exceptions are based on content of the sign. Next slide, please. So, as Kevin pointed out, dealing with some of the next steps that we have, the Plan, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing regarding the proposed amendments. Not everything I covered today were included in those amendments. City Council has been, received this, a previous staff report, as well as this staff report, summarizing the proposed amendment, the one in December, touched base a lot on the aspects with regards to the dimensional qualifications and criteria regulations, setbacks and so forth, size, those type of things. But given where we are, again, we would suggest that, that consideration be given by, by the City Council to provide for additional opportunities and invitation to receive public comment prior to moving forward through the, the public hearing process, and certainly prior to taking the final public hearing and taking final action. Signs can be complicated. Everyone has an idea of what a good sign is and what a poor sign is, and we would want to definitely take into consideration additional thoughts. But again, our, our charge, if you will, was to attempt to modify and amend the regulations so as we come into compliance with the content-neutral status of our regulations and compliance with the Supreme Court's ruling, while maintaining and not looking to change those other criteria that we, we have in place currently. So with that, next slide, please. With that, I'm available and staff's available to answer any questions or allow you all to have a conversation. Thank you, Ms.
Thank you, Mr. Goomis. Council questions, comments? Gossamian Goldberg.
Thank you. Mr. Goomis, there, there, it's nice, what would I see in, in all of that, but what, what about enforcement? How do we enforce this, and what are the penalties for this, if we find people violating or what have you?
All right. Well, with regards to the sign regulations themselves, they are a component of the, of the zoning code. So we would, we would treat those in a similar fashion as any zoning violation. We always attempt initially to obtain compliance without having to do something more stringent, such as moving forward with the notice of violation, and then a court challenge, all those, those types of enforcements. But the, the process and the steps would be, be similar to, to that if we could not obtain compliance. With regards to enforcement, again, depending on the violation, if something is in the right-of-way, for example, then a zoning inspector might take it upon themselves to go ahead or, or Public Works to go ahead and remove that, and then we try to make that available and return them to the, to the owner. Sometimes that's not possible. And then, as I said, also, again, dependent upon, on resources available, very often, these matters are, are complaint-driven. I, I put up a temporary sign that doesn't meet the standards, and my next-door neighbor calls in a violation.
Fines? What about the fines? Are there fines?
That would, that would be, we do not impose fines. That would be determined by the, by the court.
By the court?
Yes, sir. Again, though, we stress trying to obtain compliance. That's our goal.
So any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll ask a question.
Gossamian.
Okay, you got the, the yard signs and the political signs, what's the difference in the other signs that is about business and lose weight and all this other type of stuff to business? That's the same? They get the same sixty days? I mean, how, how long they can stay there?
Well, again, with regards to yard signs, you're absolutely correct that, again, yard signs are a, a temporary sign that do not require obtaining a permit from, from the city. So, those type of signs that do, whether it's a political sign or a type of sign for a new business, and I want to put it up in my yard, or on a piece of property, being temporary signs, the regulations would be the same for those.
All these signs, you're trying to say, some of these signs are put not in their yard. I mean, we had a problem that they was putting all these new business signs everywhere, and I had a couple complaints on it, so they get the same treatment as the political signs, I want to know.
Well, again, if it's within the right-of-way, then we, then we have a violation. Because it's not on private property. And then the, the, the flip side of that is, you would still need to obtain permission of the property owner to put a, put a sign, a yard sign, a temporary yard sign, on their property. That's not to say people won't do it anymore in the future than they would today. I, I would see that, as far as an enforcement issue, very similar to what we currently, currently have to experience. Yes, sir.
I got to ask you another question. Them political signs, and I heard you say when you take them up, what, you just going to put them somewhere and they can't get their signs back, or, or how y'all going to work that?
No, sir. Again, and, and we're not separating political signs or, or any other sign from, from a temporary yard sign with regards to the category that it is in. If it is in the, the right-of-way, our, our standard practice has been to remove it out of the right-of-way and then to make those available so that they can be returned to the owner if so choose.
You going to make them available? I mean, show me, if somebody got my sign, how will I know where to go at?
Well, we, we attempt to, to make contact, or that you would contact the city with regards to see if, if we happen to have it.
Well, y'all did. Y'all, y'all had it in some type, touch type of container, but, you know, I had to find that out, but I think, you know, let them know where you can pick it up, too. That's, that's, some people, I didn't know that, they, some other people didn't know where to pick them at.
I understand.
Okay.
Gossamian Johnson.
Again, though, we, you know, we don't, if it's on private property, we don't just go out and snatch it up.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you have to, you gotta know the rules, but it was like, you know...
I under, yes, sir.
Sometimes people follow other people just because they sign there, you put your sign there, too, so.
Yes, sir.
You know, make it right, what we're saying. Okay.
Gossamian Johnson.
A quick question. Some time ago, we had a real problem in the city with banners, open signs, special events, and that type of thing. Is this going to clear up some of that, the, the new sign ordinance so that we don't have quite as much, we allow a little more, businesses to have a little more liberty with putting up open signs and special event signs and that, that type of thing? How is it going to affect banners?
Well, we do have a separate code dealing with, with special events that, you know, if Homorama, for example, came in and was, was, there were a number of issues associated with it, and they wanted to set up a kiosk somewhere and those type of things. But I think you're, you're referring more to the, the, when you say special event, to promotion type, type of thing. Those, those type of banners are, are treated as any other type of banner and temporary sign. And currently, as, as they're proposed, banners, I believe, are allowed for a period of up to ninety days. I believe that's correct.
Is that what it has been in the past as well? There has been some discussion?
In, in, in the past, again, perm, well, a couple things. Permits were required. Banners are considered a temporary sign, and we are not proposing that a permit be required for them currently. And again, we're talking about, I want to be sure we make a distinction between whether it's located on the building versus like some of these flags and those type of things.
But my point being, I just want to make it as easy as we can on businesses, all, all businesses that want to put up temporary signs on the property to promote product, it should be a daily, I mean, I don't know that we, we need to be as restrictive as we hasn't have in the past, as long as it's done in such a way that it's...
Well, and that, that's challenged. Currently, the way, in general, that those type of signs are regulated is, again, I believe it might be thirty days, I, I, off the top of my head, I don't know the period of time, but we limit it to three times a year also. Under the proposed regulations, it would be a temporary sign, it's, it's allowed for up to ninety days, and there would be no limit with regards to how many type of sales you might want to have.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, and we have to be consistent in our enforcement. That's my real concern. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions there on enforcement. Most of us would drive around through the city, see these signs, home, we buy homes, sitting everywhere, in the right-of-way, you name it, on poles, whatever. Other things are advertising, doing roofing, roofers and whatnot. So I see a lot of those now is everywhere throughout the city where I go. I'm concerned about how we going to manage that, if we going to put this into an ordinance or whatever, and enforcing it. That's, that's one of my big concerns. And with the banners, I see now, I don't know whether we have relaxed, the banner signage are not requirements, but they are popping up everywhere. Some have been there so long, they've changed colors. So I don't know whether or not they're... So, I don't know whether or not they're, the signage, the ordinance changed, because one time was not allowed, but a certain period of time, short, very short period of time. So, I just want to know whether or not that has changed, or what is the policy of the ordinance now that we living by?
And I believe, the distinction really is, all permanent signs require a permit unless it's prohibited. So, in order to erect a permanent sign, whether it be a monument sign, electronic message board, whatever the case may be, it needs to obtain a permit. There's landscaping standards, locational criteria, all of those type of things. They need to be located on developed properties, so you just can't develop a permanent sign on a vacant track. Temporary signs always have been a challenge, as I pointed out previously, that, you know, you get those weekend warriors. We have to, we deal with those on a, I don't want to say a case-by-case basis, but we deal with those as resources allow us to do. The ordinance doesn't change any of that type of enforcement activity. Those are resource-driven. You know, if we had 10 additional sign inspectors that could work every weekend and whatever the case may be, it would be perhaps easier or less challenging to get a handle on those type of violations, but...
But most of these I'm talking about is not weekend signs. These are everyday signs. You can ride through the city right now, and I guarantee you, you can see them throughout the city, the ones that I'm talking about today. I'm not talking about something that just put down weekends. These are something that's out there daily that I see. So, they're the ones I'm talking about.
All right. With that, then, I would, I'll instruct our staff to keep a better eye out on governing and regulating some of the, you know, those type of signs that are being posted.
Okay, what about the banners? I lumped a lot of stuff together to you, so...
About banners?
Banners, yes.
What about them, sir?
I ask you, what the ordinance on banners now, it was very limited time in the past. Now, I see them popping up everywhere. Some have been there so long, they've changed colors.
Well, again, with regards to, and there's several different type of banners, there are a banner that would be attached to a building versus those flags and those. They are regulated. Yes, sir.
Flag ones I'm talking about.
Like the flags that you might stick out in front of your property? But again, those are considered temporary signs.
After 90 days, what's the limit on it?
Vice Mayor, are you referring to like pennants?
These thing that stick in the ground and they sit there.
Okay.
We call them pennants, flags or whatever.
Yes, sir. Well, again, temporary signs are permitted for a 90-day period. The banner and feather flags that you're referring to...
Feather flag, okay.
You're permitted, one ground mounted with a maximum height of six feet and 32 square feet.
Okay, thank you, sir. It's plenty of them out there that doesn't meet that requirement.
Just had one quick question. Thank you, Mr. Goomis, for your presentation. Real estate signs are popping up, of course, we're in a good market right now. Is the real estate signs, because they come in all shapes and sizes, are they considered under the same ordinance of signs that are printed signs or right-of-way? What is the definition for real estate?
For real estate signs? Into the nuts and bolts, sir. We would classify that as signs for property that's for sale. And they would be, again, they're considered a temporary sign. We do have standards. With regards to signs located on property for sale or rent, such signs shall not count towards the temporary sign allowance and shall be removed within 10 days of the property no longer available for sale or rent.
How long can they stay there?
They can stay there until the property sold, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. As it relates to the lighting, some of the yard signs, you referred to it as three-foot candles. Can you elaborate what you mean with about a three-foot candle?
Yes, sir, as best I can. A foot candle is an industry standard of measurement of light. The regulations require that, in the case of electronic message boards, for example, that the bright, it's a measurement of brightness, that that light limitation be .3 foot candles at the property line. So, it's not saying how bright the sign can be right up against it. Again, there, we're looking to regulate based on the ambient light conditions, depending on the circumstances, daytime, cloudy day, nighttime, and so forth. But we don't want that brightness of a sign to be intrusive as it leaves a property. And as I pointed out, we have similar regulations with regards to parking lot lighting and so forth, so that it's not intrusive on the neighboring property. So, again, a foot candle, and I'd have to look up the technical definition to get into the detail, but it is a standard measurement of light.
But not intrusive on the neighboring prop? Is that what you said?
Correct. The standard that I was describing is measured at the property line.
If you get a chance, if you could research that just a little bit more, so I can really understand what you're...
Yes, sir. I'll provide you with some more detailed information on the definition and how foot candles are measured.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goomis. I did have a couple of comments, not to inundate you with some more questions, because you've had quite a few, but based on Mr. Hughes's presentation, the impetus behind this whole thing was the Supreme Court addressing the content issue. Because we take content out of the question, a lot of the ordinances that we currently have are based on content, be it political signs, real estate signs. So, now, I guess they don't have any relevance as to whether they're political or real estate, I would imagine, or restaurants in regards to menu boards and that sort of thing. So, I know in the past, when we talked about a banner ordinance, I guess we still do have a ordinance that we passed three or four years ago that allowed for a permanent banner and an annual permit, I believe it was 24 square feet, attached to a permanent structure of some type. And then, you have the other banners, which are the temporary banners, which would go along with a special events permit. Would that be correct? So, I think. And then, we discussed real estate signs. I know also, in the past, in regards to signage, made allowances for real estate developments, I believe, to have like a four-by-four sandwich sign in front of their development. And then, that would say that was specific to a real estate development. So, there's a lot of ambiguity there in that it doesn't appear like we will have the ability to regulate signage to the degree that we have in the past, because what is good for one would be good for all. The temporary signage, I'm still trying to wrap my arm around. I mean, a lot of what we're talking about, what's on right-of-way, and that's just on the right-of-way, nothing to do with signage. It's just your stuff's in the wrong place, not allowed there. So, that can come up, and we can obviously, if we want to pay significantly more attention to that, then we would pick those up that are in the right-of-way, and I think that's the standard process anyhow. When you referred to weekend warriors, that's exactly right. They're no staff, you know, get very limited staff, a city employees at Friday after 5:00 and before 8:00 or 9:00 on Monday morning. So, these signs go in the ground, you know, in the right-of-way, on telephone poles, and then they're eventually moved, but they take for granted, there's nobody working, for the most part, a limited staff working to address those issues. The temporary signs, we talk about temporary signs in the same regards. If we're not going to talk about political signs, I'm having a hard time wrapping my arms around that, too, and we're going to say temporary signs get to stay up for 90 days in anybody's yard, and as many as you want to have, if I understand the conversation. So, you help me, are temporary signs 90 days? If it comes down for a day, does it get to go back up? It'd be temporary for another 90 days? I mean, not that I think there's going to be a sudden proliferation of signs all the way across the city, but there also doesn't seem to be any constraints on it whatsoever, regardless of the sign content. So, personally, it would behoove us if we could put something that would regulate that temporary signage, other than just, you can leave it out for 90 days, you can have as many as you want, and you can have anything on it that you want. That's kind of wide open. And when it comes to political signs, I guess political signs would be a temporary sign. So, if it's 90 days, then political signs would be up for 90 days versus 60 and 15 or whatever we had before that. So, I think we've got a lot of work to do. The 45-foot sign on some MUDs, depending on the size, maybe we need to have something in between that, because we're going from, I believe, what is a 14-foot max height right now to 45. So, that's a fairly large disparity, so maybe a smaller MUD could have a 24-foot sign. I mean, I'm just saying. But it all seems kind of confusing to me. Some of these things are great. I mean, 60 seconds on a message board, I mean, that's, makes perfectly good sense. Menu and preview boards. Menu and preview boards are kind of menu and preview boards because they're associated with a restaurant. So, does that mean that any business, say my own, if I wanted to create a menu board or a message board, when you pull into my dealership, I might sell hamburgers or french fries, but I would be able to do that now, under the new ordinance, because it has to be content neutral. So, and I'm not asking you to answer all these. I'm just saying, there's a lot of questions in my mind, and it seems to be a lot of work that needs to be done to define what can and cannot be done, because a lot of it's, I mean, I'm just, I don't see how you can enforce much of anything if you say it's just going to be kind of a Wild West show out there. So, maybe we need to put, ensure that we have certain limitations on all signs, regardless of content. And I think that that would be permissible. We can still regulate location and size and times and that sort of thing. I think we need to look at it a little bit more or more concisely from that standpoint, if we're just going to open it up, because I'm just feeling like it's couldn't get out of hand.
Well, excuse me for interrupting.
Go ahead, I'm done. I'm done, Randy.
I don't want to, I know it comes across that it's going to be the Wild West in the sense, but again, for a menu board or some other type of permanent sign, you're correct. Today, we define that by what the content is and its association with, you know, a particular business and those type of things. But think of it in terms of, it still is a permanent sign that has certain standards, and it's now considered a directional sign, and that within, on a piece of property, you know, it's permitted in a commercial district. And we have locational criteria where it's located, and it's not visible to the traveling public going past and so forth. So, we address those issues in a similar manner that we do now. But again, you're absolutely correct. To a certain degree, our regulations do attempt, or they do regulate, based on content. We have different standards for, again, using the political sign as the example of, you know, I believe, 90 days before an election, 15 days after an election, and they need to come down. That's the same as a sign, if I wanted to put Bob is Great in my front yard.
You could put it in your own yard, I don't know if anybody else would put it out there.
But you understand what, but you're absolutely right with regards...
But the menu board's what comes to mind, because the menu board, by definition, would be a menu. So, and I realize menu boards have their own specifications as far as square footage, location, you know, they have to be, they can't be parallel to the road and blah, blah, blah. But what I'm saying is, if we take all the content out of it, then, and I'll use myself as an example, as long as I adhere to the same standards as far as zoning, size, location, then I could have a menu board on my dealership. When you come to pull in to do service, you can talk on the phone and, I mean, on a little speaker and let my service writers know that you want to get oil changed and you're coming around, and we could post prices over there. And all those, under current regulations, would not have been allowed, I don't think, because menu boards, by definition, are for menus which were considered for restaurants, you know, or eating establishments. So, under the new guidelines, because you have to be content neutral, whatever is good for Chick-fil-A, be good for me.
You would need to make that decision if it worked. Yes, sir.
If I could get that much for chicken. But anyhow, that's another story. Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, you are, you can go take an Advil or whatever you need, and we're finished. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. I understand that we have a motion for a closed session this evening. Madam Clerk, will you please read the motion for consideration?
Pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8 and A1, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment, and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees in the city, specifically the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the Clean Community Commission. The Clean Community Commission keeps up the beautiful executive board, the Community Policy and Management Team, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Economic Development Authority of the City of Suffolk, the Fine Arts Commission, the Historic Landmarks Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Library Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the Paul D. Camp Community College Board, the Planning Commission, the Sister Cities Commission, the Suffolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, the Planning Council, the Virginia Municipal League Policy Committees, the Wetlands Board, and the Appointment of the City Manager. And item number two, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3, the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly-held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically regarding the following tax map numbers, 26 asterisk 1, 34G18A asterisk 361, 34G18A regarding the following tax map numbers, 26 asterisk 1, 34 G18A asterisk 361, 34 G18A asterisk 368, 34 G18A asterisk 369A, 34 G17A asterisk 168 asterisk 169, 34 G18A asterisk 362 asterisk 365, and 25 asterisk 24B.
Counsel motion's been presented. Councilman Fawcett with a second. Councilman Williams with a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Labarlo.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Newman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of 8 to 0.
This work session is adjourned, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.